Hi, I am not in fact Santa Claus. I am in fact Shelby Williams with Plano City Council. Now tonight, we've got, I've got two announcements. We had two big items for discussion and we had a smattering of smaller items for discussion. So I'll start with the announcements. First, as has been our tradition since 2020, the Plano City Council is taking turns ringing the bell for the Salvation Army to raise money for those in need in the holiday season. So I will be ringing the bell this Saturday between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM at the Kroger at 7100 Independence Parkway in Plano. Please come see me, please make a donation to Salvation Army to help those who are most in need. Second announcement, as many might have anticipated, I am announcing my reelection bid to serve you for four more years on Plano City Council. Four years ago, I asked for your support and your vote, and by the grace of God, you gave it to me to allow you to, to allow me to serve you on the city council. I made a lot of campaign promises then and I'm proud and I'm blessed to have been able to fulfill all of them with the assistance of my fellow council members within just 15 months of my election. And I've moved on to all new things. So what I want to do over the next four years is number one, preserve everything we've accomplished. I ran on adopting the effective tax rate now called the no new revenue rate, keeping tax property taxes flat for at least two years in a row. We have now done it four years in a row for the city of Plano. Now, in transparency, I did not actually anticipate championing that again this past budget cycle, but because of 40-year high inflation, I did not want to hit our people twice, once with inflation, once with the tax increase. So we adopted it again. That was every year that I've been on council, I have successfully voted to keep property taxes flat. Again, transparently, don't expect that in perpetuity because if you've attended my Property Tax 101 seminar or watched the webinar from 2020 that I did with Representative Matt Shaheen, you know that in order for city government to keep pace with inflation, one of two things has to happen. Either we need to raise taxes sufficient over time to keep pace with that inflation, or we need to increase the number of taxpayers and gain economies of scale. Now, we already have 288,000 people in Plano. I do not want to significantly increase our population and hence our density. We're already the second, we already have the second highest density in the state of Texas for a city of more than 250,000 people. So I want to make sure we are taxing and spending appropriately and wisely and that we are driving maximum value for the people of Plano. That's been my goal all along. Second, we repealed the Plano Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan and we started the process of creating a new comprehensive plan which was passed a little more than a year ago. My goal at the outset of that was to create a new comprehensive plan which quote, "The overwhelming majority of our people could get behind." We accomplished that. I want to make sure that is preserved and that, as I've always said, we create the future version of the Plano that we all love today and that we all moved here for or stayed here for. So in addition to these things, a couple of big initiatives that are meaningful to me are number one, DART reform. I'll go in, I'll elaborate on that at length later, but I want DART reform. Number two, and there are many, more than I'm going to list here, but a big one is I'm pursuing a 20 to 30-year maintenance roadmap for the city of Plano. We're a mature city, we're built out. Our city was built in bursts in the eighties and nineties. Pardon me. And a lot of our infrastructure is due for replacement and repair. Roads, water lines, et cetera. Now, we passed an historic bond package last year, historic because it was so large, two thirds of which was for maintaining our roads. When we know we're going to have to maintain all of this infrastructure in perpetuity, I don't think there's a reason to have to continually pass bond packages for it. We currently pay $20 million a year just to service our bonds. That's not to pay them back, that's the quote-unquote interest on them. I want to retire as much of that debt as possible and instead replace it with maintenance so that we can save the, or maintenance funds. We know we're going to have these expenses, plan for them, have this 20 to 30-year roadmap, and then fund it appropriately so that we can retire the debt and recoup that $20 million a year we spend just on interest and instead put it into our roads, put it into our sewage lines, et cetera, and really make it work in the favor of the people of Plano. So I will be updating my website with all of my goals for the next four years, but those are some of the big ones. And the, so like I said, four years ago, I asked for your support and your vote, and I ask again now. The election, the municipal election is on Saturday, May 6th. I'm not sure when early voting starts yet, but we've got some time. You can see all of this, of course, on my website and all of my goals and the accomplishments. ShelbyHWilliams.com. Moving on to the rest of the agenda, or the actual agenda. We started out with a DART discussion about a proposed DART ILA inter-local agreement. Now, DART has some extra money leftovers. So they've been working with the Regional Transportation Council to figure out how best to redistribute some of the surplus back to the DART member cities. There are 13 member cities, including the city of Plano. So $28 million is proposed to return to the city of Plano for DART-approved projects. These can include several things like complementary transportation, but also improvements on roads that assist public transit. Well, as long as DART's going to choose to run the bus network, then our roads should qualify. So the city staff is going to compile a list of prospective projects that could use that $28 million and bring it to us for consideration on the January 9th meeting. Now, it's worth noting that DART is funded by a one-cent sales tax from its member cities. That's by state statute set back in the eighties. And the city of Plano currently gives over $100 million per year in the sales taxes that are collected here to DART. Now, it's worth noting that that, we don't write a check to DART. All of those sales taxes go to the comptroller, the state comptroller. The comptroller cuts the check to DART and then cuts another check to us for our share of the sales tax. So that's over $100 million a year going to DART. We're looking at getting $28 million, a one-time $28 million rebate right now. So that kind of all goes into my goal of DART reform. But there's a, there's a small step there. We reviewed the comprehensive monthly financial report. Long story short, sales tax is way up over last year. Of course, half of that goes to DART because the state of Texas charges 6.25% sales tax. Cities have the option of an additional 2% sales tax and half of that 2% goes to DART. And then the big item during our preliminary open meeting was our discussion about comments of public interest. So at the last meeting, there was a discussion about ways to change our comments of public interest segment to, to keep things focused on city business. Now, for anybody who's unaware, our comments of public interest is something that's been around for as long as I've known. At the beginning of each regular meeting, which starts at 7:00 PM, we offer up to 30 minutes for members of the public to come and address any item that is, that's important to them. It doesn't actually have to be an agenda item. They can sign up separately to speak on agenda items during the agenda items, but we offer this space up to a half hour every meeting for members of the public to come and say whatever's on their mind, while we as council are a captive audience. Now, starting in, I think it was February, right after the invasion of Ukraine, we first got a visit from Alex Stein and what I call the undercard performers. So several of them came to try out their comedy routines. And I should say comedy loosely. Stein and one other were kind of funny, the rest were really not. But that performance at that Plano City Council meeting is the one that made Stein famous. It went viral, it got him on Tucker Carlson, et cetera. So I think the reason for that is twofold. Number one, out of all the videos I've seen of Stein at city council meetings, we have the, pretty, by far, the highest quality video production. So it's, it's good, high-quality video production. Second, what he did there, and he rapped about the invasion of Ukraine and Putin and Zelensky and everything, that's pretty uncontroversial. 99.99% of all people were behind Ukraine. And so it was viral material. It was easy for people to like and share on social media. In contrast to many of his other bits that I've seen, including where he dressed in a woman's swimsuit at a Plano City Council meeting ripping on Leah Thomas, that's something more controversial, far fewer people like and share that. So it was that first performance that went viral, not just nationwide, globally. And funny anecdote, my wife is from Russia, as many of you know. She's been a proud US citizen for about 20 years now. But somebody from Russia, a friend of hers, actually sent her the clip of Stein for some reason thinking he was a US politician. And she's saying, "Look at, look at what US politicians are doing." So it was a little humorous, but that first time Stein was up, I chuckled. It was a very novel approach, you know, doing this bit in front of city councils. Unusual and we all just kind of brushed it off. But they kept coming back, three meetings in a row. And frankly, it got kind of abusive because this is all taxpayer-funded. And never mind our time, you know, we all signed up for this. We pledge our time to serve the city of Plano. But people who are at city council meetings who are paid by the hour, that's taxpayer money that funds them to, to hang on and wait for their turn to speak on an agenda item. Especially when we have outside council there to speak to things, they charge a lot by the hour. And then people who come to speak on agenda items, every, every minute or every half hour that we're delayed to hear quote-unquote comedy routines is another half hour that they don't get to go back home to their families or go pick up their kids. Or they're keeping their kids at the council meeting past their bedtime because they're waiting for their turn to speak. It happens quite frequently. So three meetings in a row, it felt like we were just the taxpayer-funded video production studio. Not once have any of them said anything pertaining to actual city of Plano business or anything the Plano, the city of Plano can do anything about. It's, it's just a venue, a taxpayer-funded venue to build their audience. So it wasn't long after this continued every meeting before some started talking about how we can change comments of public interest to curtail this. But then they dropped off for quite a while, but then they came back and sometimes very inappropriately. Never mind the showing up in the woman's swimsuit. One of them, a few meetings ago, made some very inappropriate and debasing comments about the female members around the dais, city council members and city attorney and city secretary. It was a little oblique. I wasn't sure we all recognized what was being said at the time, but it quickly set in and it's completely unacceptable. So I think if a couple of them came every once in a blue moon and did something that wasn't debasing or actually saying really inappropriate things in front of kids who do attend the council meetings on occasion, I don't think anybody would have a problem with it. But because it had become abusive, there was discussion about how to limit council, comments of public interest. So the meeting last week, some of the things that were discussed were moving comments of public interest to a special called meeting at an earlier time and having it non-televized, not recorded. So obviously, if they can't get the video recording, there's less that they could promote online, but they can and have set up their own recording equipment at council meetings. Not the same quality, but nonetheless. Plus, the proposed start time was 4:30. Normally, we start council meetings at 5 o'clock, we have executive session, eat and then have preliminary open meeting and then the regular meeting at 7:00. And I pointed out last week, 4:30 is really hard for a lot of people to make just to speak to their council while we are a captive audience. Then there was a proposal to move it to 5:00 so that we could keep it non-televized. There were proposals about limiting it to Plano residents. I pointed out that there are many legitimate stakeholders that are not actual Plano residents. They might work here, they might be business owners. They might live on the border of the city and be concerned about a zoning case. There are many legitimate reasons why people might have comments about what's going on in the city of Plano and they don't actually live or work here. There was also discussion about limiting it to city business, which we actually adopted last night. And the, the city business aspect of it, I think is fine, but it's easy to work around. Somebody who's committed to performing in front of us for, to build their audience, they can just pick a random issue that pertains to the city and form a bit around it. It's not going to stop them. I have no illusions about that. But after thinking about this very hard for a week and hearing from a number of people, I spoke last night, several people did, several council members did, essentially in favor of the status quo. Reason being, in a nutshell, as much of a distraction and sometimes an annoyance as those performances are, I can't think of a way to limit them and curtail them that does not also hamper the ability for the public to make legitimate comments of public interest to the city council. Because there were workarounds, like I'll just pick a random issue in Plano or even an agenda item to come speak to. Like if we just didn't televise comments of public interest, okay, Stein or anybody else could just pick an agenda item and then create a bit around it and then come speak during the agendized comments of the agenda item and that is televised. So there are ways to get around it, but I think the spirit of it is important. Plus, while I think it's incredibly valuable, and it's not required by law, by the way, to have comments of public interest, but I think we have a moral obligation. As public servants, we have a moral obligation while we are assembled to offer the public the chance to speak to us while, as I've said, we are a captive audience. Moreover, the more I considered it and heard from people, I think it's equally valuable for the public to be able to hear what other members of the public say to the council when we're assembled. So I and others said that we wish to maintain the status quo with a couple of minor modifications. One being that we, we would say comments should be limited to city business, things the city council can actually do anything about. Now, of course, it's easy to work around that and speak on a technicality. But also profanity, lewd comments, things of that nature, we're going to cut your mic. Okay, that's not First Amendment right, especially in front of kids, which when it's televised, always could be kids listening. So, and it certainly has nothing to do with city business. So those are the only changes, otherwise we're going to leave comments of public interest alone. We're going to allow members of the public to come and speak to us every meeting as we always have. So I would ask that Stein and the undercard performers recognize and respect that it's not just us whose time you're wasting. You're wasting the time of everybody else who's there to speak. Staff members who are, who have to hang on to the end of their part of the meeting or the whole meeting before they go home to their families. Other members of the public who came to speak on agenda items that have to wait. Please respect that and don't abuse it. All right, moving on to the regular meeting. We, as we do at the last council meeting of every year, we had a performance by The Legacy of Harmony, previously called The Men of Note, Notes, or Note, I think. And they did a couple of Christmas songs. By the way, this hat, I wear, I have worn this at the last council meeting of the year, every year since I was elected. So this is a little bit of a tradition. And I might be the first person in history to announce a political campaign wearing a Santa hat. So I'm a trailblazer. And I've even got the beard to go with the Santa motif. And then the Friends of the Plano Public Library presented a check for $103,000 to the city of Plano for the Plano Public Library. Now, the Friends of the Plano Public Library was established the same year as the Plano Public Library, 1965. And since then, the Friends of the Plano Public Library has raised and donated more than two, or around $2.2 million for the benefit of the Plano Public Library system. So thank you very much for your contributions. A couple of agenda items that we discussed. There are, there was about $5.5 million earmarked for sewer improvements along the President George Bush Turnpike. Now, the current sewer lines there are a smaller diameter pipe. We're going to replace those with larger diameter pipe to increase capacity and prevent surcharging. Surcharging is when there's not enough capacity in the system to maintain the flows and it backs up. Well, you can imagine what happens when a sewer line backs up. It can create maintenance and odor issues. So this was actually on the consent agenda. I pulled it to ask about the, the most prominent place I can think of in the city where there are odor issues and that's the Rowlett Creek wastewater quote-unquote sewer treatment plant. And it seems to me there's a lot of odor issues there and a lot of backups and a lot of surcharging. So I asked when the, when we're going to replace those lines. And I was pledged to, or staff pledged to get me an answer to that. But that goes along the lines with the 20 to 30-year maintenance roadmap that I'm pursuing. I want to make sure we're deliberately thinking about these things and not waiting until there are problems or waiting until they're gotten around to. We do have a maintenance plan, but it's not that forward-looking. So I want to make sure that we have a good view to that and that we're prioritizing appropriately, especially in areas of our city where we have problems, whether they're traffic problems due to road conditions or signalization or they are odor problems due to sewer lines. We then moved to the second big discussion, which was a rezoning request for The Legends at Chase Oaks Apartment Complex. Now, this apartment complex is literally surrounded by a golf course. It was built in 1997, I believe. And the original zoning for the land was for townhomes. Back then, there wasn't a lot of demand for townhomes. And so rather than building the townhomes, the developer at the time requested to rezone for multifamily but to keep the density the same as it would have been with townhomes, 10 units per acre. Now, that area, there are several apartment complexes in that immediate area. All of them were approved first before The Legends at Chase Oaks. This is important in history. And they all have higher density than The Legends at Chase Oaks. Up to, I think, 20 units per acre, double what Legends of Chase Oaks is in terms of density. So this is important because all of that density was baked into the cake when the council in the late nineties said, "You got to keep the density at 10 units per acre." So the applicant here came to request, they purchased the property a few years ago. And they're requesting to add several new buildings, some three stories in height, to the complex with, I think it was 124 new units. There are currently 346 units, so they wanted to increase that by about a third for a total of 470 units. Now, that's not a massive addition and the density would increase from 10 units per acre to 13.6 units per acre. So I give you the background to know that, because one of the cases they made is all these other apartments have higher density. Yes, that is true, but they were already approved and the density restriction on this property was made knowing the density of the surrounding properties. So this applicant actually came before council two years ago in November of 2020. Their request was denied at that time 6 to 2. That is after staff at the time, it was submitted under the old Plano Tomorrow Plan, which I spoke about a little bit ago. The staff at the time had recommended against it. It went to planning and zoning, it looked like planning and zoning was going to deny it. They requested to table and so they tabled it, they made a couple of revisions and then came back to planning and zoning. They didn't address all of staff's concerns, but it passed planning and zoning the second time and then came before council where it was denied 6 to 2. Now, out of all the discussions about all the concerns people had prior to that, one of which was buildings along Legacy. The biggest concern that council had and was also reflected in staff's report was one of the main angles that the applicant, the developer, or I should say complex owner, was pursuing is that they wanted to build the additional units, 124 new units. That didn't change between two years ago and tonight. They wanted to build 124 new units so that they could effectively renovate and update the existing 346 units. So they said then and now that they planned to spend around $15,000 per door to update the existing units. Now, they're 30 years old, they should be updated. And I'm a big believer in maintaining properties. However, as I said at the meeting tonight, that applies to everybody. If you own your property, if you're a homeowner, you expect to spend a certain amount of money over time to keep it up to date and keep it in good repair. No different than people who rent apartments. They expect the periodic investment in updates and repair to be reflected in the cost of their rent. So if they were to invest $15,000 per door, or let's just say it would be $20,000 per door if they can't leverage the economies of scale by having a large construction project to build a bunch of new buildings and units simultaneously, then the people who choose to live there and rent there would not only expect to have the cost of those updates reflected in their rent, but would probably happily pay it. The applicant noted tonight that they have an occupancy rate of around 95, 96%. So it's, it's in demand. Plus, in the area it's in, surrounded by a golf course, you know, rents would have to be increased a little bit in order to pay for the renovations over time. I don't think anybody would really have a problem paying the incremental extra rent, especially compared to what's already been. The, the rent increases that we've already seen due to increasing property values. Because remember, people who rent have none of the protections that property owners and homeowners are afforded against property tax increases, none. Land values go up, you pay through the nose in your rent and property taxes. So we're talking about a comparatively minor incremental increase. One of the points that was brought up, and we hear this pretty frequently, is that it's, it doesn't make sense now because land values have gone up so much in Plano. You have to build apartments, you have to build multifamily, you have to build higher density in order to make it worth it to build on those properties. And I've said for a long time that I don't think that's the case. Building multifamily is more profitable, especially denser multifamily. And I do recognize that this proposal was not that dense. But, but multifamily is more profitable because it creates a recurring revenue stream. Whereas if you build a house for sale or a townhome for sale, you sell it once and you're done. However, that point was recently proven with a new small community of around 150 townhomes, single-family attached homes that we approved on currently undeveloped land in Plano near 75, on the west side of 75, off Thunderbird Lane. That was a Huff Heinz Community Project. And I've always said that if you don't allow a piece of land, whether it's being developed for the first time or redeveloped, to be developed into the most profitable project, then the next tier, the next most profitable projects will come bidding for it. And that's what happened there. Their project was approved for the townhomes, which is, I think, overwhelmingly what we need in Plano because as I've mentioned before, we suffer from a dichotomy of housing. We have large or large-ish, single-family homes and we have apartments. What we, what we don't have is mobility for people at different life stages and different needs to go to different housing stock. As such, we're creating artificial scarcity which drives up prices. Now, of course, there's a lot of demand for housing in Plano, that's not going to go away. But we can alleviate the, the pressure and the increase in housing prices without just building more housing. So I don't think that's a panacea because it's just going to exacerbate the dichotomy and the lack of diversity in our housing stock. So anyway, one of the central messages was that it would be a bad idea to send a message that you should or could increase your density and just build more housing in order to renovate your existing stock. Because what's to prevent the more than 100 other apartment complexes in Plano from saying, "Well, then we want to do the same thing. We want to stick another building over here, add more apartments, get new revenue from those apartments so that we can update our existing stock." Every property owner, whether it's an apartment complex or a home, has the responsibility to keep their property maintained. So increasing the density in order to do that, I don't think is a legitimate reason. So, and neither did the majority of So um, and neither did the majority of council because that was the central concern. There were other concerns and I do want to give credit to the applicant for making some adjustments, uh, such as they revised the concept plan so that there were no more buildings um, along Legacy and they had a setback from Legacy greater than what was required. So I do want to recognize those efforts, but the underlying proposition uh, which was one hundred and twenty-four new units, um, with several new buildings, some of which are three stories in height, and doing that in order to um, gain the economies of scale to update the existing units, uh, hadn't changed. It was all the same as before and so uh, we denied that six to two as well uh, tonight. So that brought us to our last item, which was the review of the um, comprehensive, or consolidated annual performance evaluation report, CAPR for short. Uh, long story short, this is a report that is required by HUD, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city of Plano receives about two point two million dollars a year in HUD funds. And uh, I, I don't think that's necessary. We can uh, we can provide for that ourselves. But the HUD funds uh, come with a lot of strings, including a lot of reporting requirements about how we're using the money. So this CAPR report is a required report as a recipient of HUD money. Now, I have learned that the city of Richardson does not take HUD money. So that is worth exploring and may be a tenant of my campaign for reelection. Remember, the uh, next election is on Saturday, May sixth and I am Shelby Williams with Plano City Council, wishing you all a very blessed Christmas, happy holidays and a happy new year. Thank you and God bless.